I have 6:30 and I have a thumbs up from the technical department. So, I'd like to first confirm before we get started. Whitney, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Are you able to hear me okay?
Perfect, perfect, thank you. So, we do have Whitney Lloyd joining us virtually and the rest of us are here tonight with the exception of Dale. So with that, we have a quorum. We'll go ahead and get start. Oh, Pledge of Allegiance. Quorum. Golly, summer, brain drain. Pledge of Allegiance first, sorry. Now, I will say that we have a quorum and we will go ahead and get started. Dr. Phillips?
Thank you, Ms. Wieldon. We'd like to start off each meeting by reminding ourselves and our community of our mission, vision, and core values. The vision of BCSC is to be the choice to learn, work, and play. Our mission is to develop expert learners by partnering with our community to invest in people. And our core beliefs include that we all can rise to the challenge of high expectations, that learning is most effective when we have choice, flexibility, and see relevance, that we thrive when our physical, social, and psychological needs are met, that our community and school district are stronger when we partner with one another, that we flourish because of the diversity and variability in our community, and that we, that our democracy and democratic institutions are strengthened by civic-minded citizens.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on to a public hearing and I actually gavel out of a meeting because decisions are not made during a public hearing, so I'll gavel out. At this time, anybody who would like to discuss our Flex Ed program can come forward and speak.
So just, I'll give a brief background. This is a repeat of what we just did about six months ago. Because of the new grant cycle that starts this, this summer, this fall, we have to redo it. So, this is just a reminder that we've always had to, in our Title I schools, have our para-professionals, our teaching assistants, if they were going to work in a Title I school and be paid using federal funds, they had to either have a bachelor's degree or take an advanced test. We were able to eliminate that requirement and provide our own training for those TAs, but have to do, the federal government requires us to do a public hearing and make sure that the public knows that this is going on and they have an opportunity to speak in support of it or against it. So that's the topic.
So if anyone would like to speak here in the room, you can, you can just step up to the podium. I have a couple of people signed up for public comments. If, if that's what you were going to speak on, you can do that now, otherwise we can do that during our public comment section. I've counted at least 10 Mississippi's, so I'm going to assume nobody would like to speak on this topic tonight and I will gavel back into our regular meeting. Next, we have school board member reports. Ms. Lloyd, would you like to start?
Sure, good evening. My committees have not convened since our last school board meeting, so I do not have any critical updates for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Major?
Yeah, no, no updates on the Health Trust, but I think Dr. Bozeman and Dr. Phillips were both in the audience at the Redevelopment Commission meeting. Earlier, it was a joint meeting with the Redevelopment Commission and City Council talking about the downtown 2030 Columbus Strategic Plan. And they've got a lot of stuff that they want to do. They've got several committees that are going to be working together over the course of the next year that are going to work to try and identify how we can make the downtown a more vibrant and inviting area for people to live, people to work, and people to play. Is someone, I don't know if he's here or not, but Josh Burnett mentioned that as well. And so, I think what I'll have over the coming months to the next year is some updates here and there on how they, they feel that they're going to help improve the downtown area for all of us and for those who don't live here today but could live here in the future. So, more to come.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Stanner?
Mr. Glick and I are on the Districting and Facilities Committee. That committee, and a subset of the committee in particular, has been working on the construction manager as contractor for Taylorsville Elementary School for the project there. And we'll hear more about that and perhaps take action on that later in the meeting.
I, I do not have anything to report today. Mr. Glick?
I do not have anything else to add.
I also do not. No meetings were held over this time.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wieldon, if I could just, before we get into Cabinet Reports, want to take a moment to honor a student who passed away over the last week. You may, may not have seen the obituary for a young man, a special young man, student rising junior at Columbus East High School. Passed away just last Thursday, I believe. And when you have a district of our size and this many students, sometimes you deal with tragedies like this, but I would ask that the board and folks in the audience just take a moment of silence to appreciate Alex Phillips and his time with us in BCSC and the joy he brought to the school, the staff, and the students at Columbus East and Central before that. Thank you very much and rest in peace, Alex.
Okay. Mr. Brenniger?
Okay, I'm colorblind. Green? We're green, okay. This is our twice-a-year ECA report, financial report. As we discussed in February, the majority of the receipts for these groups came in the first semester with fundraisers, our large sporting events with East-North football, East-North basketball, and the various other East-North events that take place during the first semester. Overall, we had about 114,000 more expenses than we did in receipts, but we anticipated that, again, there were greater receipts revenue in the first semester. We had eight schools that did have more revenue than expenditures, Central, Clifton, CSA New Tech, McDowell, Mount Healthy, Parkside, Richards, and Smith. For the year, we end balance of 1.2 million with an additional 940,000 in investment funds. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, no questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allocating time to hear about the teacher performance report updates and then go over excellent and engaged staff metrics for the 24-25 school year. First, we'll start with the Performance Evaluation Indiana Code. This code is recently changed, so what you see on the left was of the past. We once were required to implement performance evaluations that included those domains of being highly effective, effective, improvement necessary, and ineffective. You will still see those domains in our data that we are going to present today. However, there has been an update to the performance evaluation system at the state of Indiana level. So what we are able to now do is to have a performance evaluation system. It has to be conducted at least annually and we have to post the plan on the website. Even as we can make these changes legislatively, BCSC will maintain its current performance evaluation system for this upcoming 2025-26 school year. We do have an evaluation oversight committee that meets frequently and CEA is a member on that committee. We will look at potential changes, but for the 25-26 school year, we will maintain our current performance evaluation system. Going over that information, our current and this upcoming school year, performance evaluation system includes these four domains. Those domains are universal design for learning, positive behavioral instructional supports or PBIS, academic citizenship, and student success. You can see the weights of those domains and the domain descriptions. All of this is available on our Teacher Evaluation Guidebook, which is posted on our website. It's the same evaluation system as last year as well. We have updated information to provide you for the 24-25 school year. This graph depicts our aggregated evaluation averages from 2020 to 2025 in each of those performance domains. You will notice that we have gray domains of academic success and learning outcomes. Those were once domains in our Teacher Performance Evaluation System. In school year 22-23, those two domains collapsed underneath the student success domain, which is the domain you'll see on that far corner. This information is the same as the previous, just in table form versus graph form, where you will be able to see year-over-year what were the averages for our performance in those domain elements of UDL, PBIS, academic citizenship, and then student success. Again, this table reflecting the collapsing of those performance domains into, those two performance domains into one during the 22-23 school year. Here, we take a look at our colleges and universities. We look at what college or university has a teacher graduated from with their bachelor's degree in education. We look at the performance within each domain, thank you. So you can see, University of Southern Indiana scored the highest in the UDL domain on average and the overall achievement domain on average for our total. Then we have Indiana University Southeast performing the highest in academic citizenship and student success, with St. Mary of the Woods College performing the highest in PBIS. You'll also see that the bulk of our teachers come from Indiana University Bloomington, with Indiana University Columbus also being high on the list of producing teachers for BCSC. Okay, now we have our evaluation averages by years of experience. So you can see our zero-to-four, five-to-nine, et cetera, with those, those ineffective, improvement necessary, effective, and highly effective categorizations at the bottom as well. Again, this is an update of our teacher performance evaluation. We had this update last year. Next year, I will inform you what the committee overall has decided in response to those legislative changes. Move on to excellent and engaged staff because our teacher performance system is just one component of our excellent and engaged staff priority. Our goal in the excellent and engaged staff priority is to recruit and retain an excellent and engaged staff with at least 92% of retention excluding retirements year-over-year. So from school year 23-24 to school year 24-25, we retained 93% of certified staff. As of July 14, when this presentation was finalized, we had retained 94% of certified staff from the 24-25 school year to this upcoming 25-26 school year. When we break down this information, and this is looking at our retention from 23-24 to 24-25, we look at why teachers left BCSC. We categorize those in retirements, leaving for another Indiana public school corporation, a career change, moving, family needs, and health. That's how we figure our retention percentage, again, to have that 91% of retention including retirements from 23-24 to 24-25, and then that 93% excluding retirements from 23-24 to 24-25. Of staff members who retired, we look at what years of experience did they have within BCSC only? So you can see that of those that retired or resigned from 23-24 to 24-25, 43% of those staff members were in one-to-five years of BCSC experience. 24% were in the six-to-10 years of experience. Five-to-eight percent, or sorry, five-to-six percent were in the 11-to-15 years of experience, with 26% in the 16 years of experience. So let me look at that compared to our 24-25 to 25-26 school year. We have a 91% retention rate, again, this year, when we include both our retirements and our resignations. And then as of July 14, we had a 94% retention rate when we excluded our retirements from 24-25 to 25-26. And again, that breakdown of, of the teachers who left BCSC, what years of experience are they taking with them, BCSC years of experience? So what are we doing to recruit and retain an excellent in staff? First, with the help of the community and the support of the community, we have competitive salaries. That includes our referendum support. We have a competitive benefits package. Our BCSC Health Trust meets and focuses on that area of employee benefits. Right Beginnings is increasing its capacity in the upcoming school year and beyond, providing high-quality care for our staff members, youngest learners. We have multiple employee pathways that I will go through in depth in a subsequent slide. For professional growth, we look at how can we take everyone where they are and grow them from there? So we have these professional growth tracks for our students who want to one day become educators. We have professional growth tracks for peer professionals to become educators and our educators to become administrators within BCSC. We also have our mentorship models that we've presented on before with our New Teacher Academy and our literacy mentors. We have an employee engagement committee that meets and talks about how can we gather our employee engagement? What does that look like? What would we do with the information? And through that committee, it has been determined that we will engage in stay interviews in the upcoming school year. And these stay interviews will help us ask the question, why do you stay at BCSC? And thus help us determine what can we continue to enhance for our staff engagement and retention? We presented this information to our administrative council and our administrative council overall stated that staff stay when they feel valued, supported, and respected, especially by their building leadership and their teams. And that certainly is demonstrated through things such as our advisory groups, our CCIC and CIC meetings, which occur at both the building and district level. I do want to highlight one of those pathways from the 24-25 school year. We engaged in a Future Educator Signing Day in May. It was a very successful day where 31 seniors committed to a career in education. Many of those seniors are taking C4 classes to become early childhood educators or K-12 educators. Dr. Katie Jenner, the Indiana Secretary of Education, joined us. And also impactful BCSC teachers joined us as well, as each of those seniors were able to choose a BCSC teacher who inspired them to become a teacher. Mayor Mary Fredon also joined and provided a speech to our graduates. Janice Montgomery was there as well, BCSC Hall of Fame member. And ultimately, it was a community event in which the C4 culinary students and graphic design students made refreshments and also designed the graphics that you see on the screen. BCSC ended up receiving a statewide acknowledgement in the IDOE newsletter, and this was a wild success and really highlighted the community aspect that BCSC brings to students and families. A 25-26 highlight, those are those pathways. And so, we have started an apprenticeship with the Indiana Department of Education. Those are our C4 students who want to be educators. There's an early childhood education apprenticeship that they are involved in. We are working with Indiana University Columbus on a teacher apprenticeship, which will be a para-pathway. If you currently do not have a bachelor's degree and you would like to be a teacher and you work as an instructional classified staff member, then this might be an employee pathway option for you. We have transition to teaching cohorts. Those are staff members who have a bachelor's degree and would like to teach. And so that is a partnership with Indiana State University. We've started a master's degree in educational leadership cohorts. We have 15 teachers who would like to gain a master's degree in educational leadership and a building-level licensure. That's in partnership with Indiana State University. We have approximately 25 rising leaders who are teachers within BCSC, who already have their master's degree in ed leadership, they have their building-level licensure, and we want to pour into them in order to retain them. And thus, we have this rising leaders cohort where we engage in professional learning together. The Transportation Department has an employee pathway where if you would like to become a contracted bus driver, then you can start as a bus monitor-like position in order to gain hours and experience towards your license. We have internships at BCSC. Most recently, over the summer, we have technology and human resources internships in collaboration with Indiana University Columbus. And ultimately, we focus on the professional development for each staff member for all departments and buildings. In Indiana, there is something called the Rule of 85, which means when you hit this Rule of 85, you can retire and receive your full benefits from the state of Indiana. We know at BCSC, we have nine administrators currently who have reached the Rule of 85 and 82 teachers who have reached the Rule of 85. That means we have a lot of experience in our building and we are very appreciative of their continued dedication to BCSC and what they provide both their students and their colleagues. We have a new teacher orientation on July 28. And our new teacher orientation, we are going to welcome 46 new teachers. As you remember, Derek Chastain won the Teacher of the Year for BCSC for this current school year. Derek submitted his application to the Indiana Department of Education. And in his application, his message was so powerful that I asked Josh Burnett to capture that in a video for our new teachers. We have an abbreviated version to show you to conclude this presentation and then I'll ask for questions.
I love teaching science and I think being a science teacher is the best profession in the world. Listen carefully as you will never hear me say that teaching is easy, because it is not. It is hard, but I think that's why it's so important. I often think of the timeless truth in what President Kennedy said about the goal of landing on the moon. He said, "We choose to go to the moon in this decade and do the other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard." We've all likely heard it said that kids these days are not the way they used to be. This is true, but look at the world kids are growing up in today and consider how technology with instant gratification threatens the extinction of patients. Think about how we have tons of information at our fingertips while not all of it is useful or even accurate. And consider what social media might be telling our children about their self-worth. These are just a few of the things that come to my mind that makes teaching hard and yet, the more challenging teaching becomes, the more important it is for us as educators to persist in this endeavor. Our students need adults as role models. It is by example that we teach the importance of perseverance and how to be dependable. They are counting on us to be good listeners and show them empathy and seek understanding. In society with divisions, students need to see examples of people working together with respectful discourse and productive discussion where we thrive through teamwork and collaboration. Students are watching us, the adults, the teachers, and they desperately need to see evidence that when the going gets tough, we will not give up or give in. With all the ways that students depend on teachers, we must recognize that teachers need motivation too. I've set a personal goal to promote the recognition of my colleagues in this profession locally and across the state. We are motivated in part by knowing that the work we do matters, but too often, I think that the appreciation from parents and students is not shared or celebrated enough. I know teachers that have made countless impacts on students in immeasurable ways and they may not know what a difference they've made. Now's the time for us to share the impact. This is something that we can do together as a community, of fellow teachers, students, parents, legislators, and school administrators, to make teachers aware and feel appreciated for the difference they make in people's lives. The cliche is true, teachers do what they do to make a difference. I love what I do and I'm forever grateful to know that this work makes a difference.
Thank you. Questions? If you have any?
I have a few to get started.
I love teaching.
I love teaching too. I'm just not any good at it, so I do something else. Okay.
We have a, we have a pathway for that.
Good, good. We'll talk afterwards. You talked about a stay interview and I love the concept. Can you tell me a little bit more about like what that would look like? Questions we ask? Who facilitates all of those things?
Yeah, that's a great question. We spoke about an employee engage, we spoke about this through the Employee Engagement Committee and the Human Resources Team will actually be going out as a team to each building and they are optional stay interviews, so you can engage in them or not. And then you can engage in them with me or one of the HR team members. And really, the essence of the stay interview is to figure out, why do you stay? What do you look forward to when you drive to work every day? And what can we do to make your experience better? Actually, five questions we'll ask everyone. And then we'll be able to code those themes and as an employee engagement committee, determine what are the highest reasons people stay and how can we continue to enhance those reasons?
You covered a few of the pathways. I don't know if we could go back to that slide. There were quite a few on there. I'm not sure if, which one you think I fit into. Maybe that's why I asked you a question.
Transition to teaching, I think.
There were a couple in particular I wanted to learn a little bit more about master's degree in educational leadership from ISU. Can you say a little bit just about the number of people we have in that, demographics of those employees? And then maybe the third part of that is just, what does a program look like with this pathway versus if I was a teacher and just decided to go get my master's degree on my own?
Great questions. So, the masters in ed leadership through Indiana State, we have 15 teachers in that right now. So if I look at our bands of one-to-five years, six-to-10 years, that's how I like to look at things. It's a pretty even split between those in their first five years with us and those in their six-to-10 years with us who have stated, "I would, I would like to get a master's degree." Why this is different? This is BCSC cohort-specific because we will be learning through the Indiana State University courses on leadership, but we will also be able to dive into what does leadership look like in Bartholomew County, which we know is different than the rest of the state. So there are some nuances in Bartholomew County that I would like our future administrators to learn from those that are within our community. An example of that, Bartholomew Consolidated School Corporation is a very community-centered organization. We engage in those CCIC meetings. I keep pointing at Logan because he's on the Employee Engagement Committee. And other school corporations don't engage in things like that. So I would want our leaders to understand what are those pillars of leadership that we value in Bartholomew County and how can we infuse that into their master's degree program? So little how that's different and if you would go join a program on your own. And it's also a cohort experience, so you have 15 teachers going through this at the same time and they're able to support one another.
Any other questions? Yep?
You mentioned that we've got 46 new teachers joining the corporation for this upcoming school year. When we recruit and hire new, is it always people straight out of school? There was a slide about what school do they come from? Do we also have the chance to hire people with experience somewhere else?
Yeah, that's a great question. Our referendum really supports recruitment in that area. I was looking at our numbers with our Human Resources Team as we prepare for Monday. We have approximately 270 years of total experience coming to us from other school corporations or prior experience. So I state that because that referendum allows us to be competitive when we recruit. Now, some of that... Now, some of that are those C4 teachers. So when we look for a welding teacher, we want a welding teacher with quite a bit of years of experience if they're going to teach our own students how to weld. They come with us with a large number of years of experience that we take into account when we form their offer. So to your question, we have quite a bit of experience coming to us in this upcoming school year. And that referendum really supports our competitive nature. Our average teacher salary is $69,000 and the average teacher salary in the state of Indiana is about $60,500. So we are above the state average, which also helps.
Just to make sure I got those numbers right. 46 new teachers this year and they're bringing more than 200 years of experience with them?
Yes.
Any questions?
I went ahead and I took prior years 23 and 24 data for the same charts that you put together and tried to understand where we're trending. I don't know how to correlate this to student performance, but as far as all the different categories you mentioned earlier, everything has trended up. So from a standpoint of what looks like we're doing the right things, year over year, you've shown improvements. So that's a huge thank you that I guess goes out to the support staff and the teachers for focusing on those four key areas to ensure that they're scoring better, which means they're learning more about how to do each of those four areas at a much better level than they were the year before. So thank you to them, thank you to you and to others that put this together. And just, I can show you this later, but it might be good to show that just so that people outside of us that don't have the history can see that we're going the right direction.
Thank you.
I did think of one more question. On one of the early slides, when it comes to our performance evaluations and changes in Indiana legislation, if I picked up on it correctly, were to post our performance evaluation plan on the website? Is that something that we've always done or we'll start doing it because of the legislation?
We've always done that. So it's underneath the certified tile in our Human Resources website.
Gotcha, thank you.
And the update was simply removing most of the language in the performance evaluation and including only that it needed to be conducted annually and posted to the website. But we collaborate with CEA on any changes and so we'll be engaging in that in the upcoming school years.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Staubman. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of the next package of policy updates. This is a slide that should look familiar to you. In this package, we have nine policies to replace or consolidate all or part of 44 current policies. It's a relatively large package, but most of that is in one of them. And then there are two new policies proposed in this package. So I have a caveat to add here. These were posted actually before July 4th, but they were posted well ahead of the two-week timeframe as per our policy. First reading would be at this meeting. And pending that there's not a request for a work session in between now and then, they would be on their second reading at the next board meeting. But what happened after we posted these policies to the website for every, the public to review, was that three of them, we received updates from Church, Church, Hiddle and Antrim to update three of these policies based on the most recent legislative session. And so we went ahead and went on to the versions that are on the website and updated those. And the updated versions, the updated sections were highlighted in yellow and we put a note at the top to let folks know that that had been the case. And that is, just for efficiency purposes, there were not any, there weren't any changes or updates that I think would have been controversial, but I also don't want to replace my judgment or your judgment with mine. So if there's any board members who wish for us to pull those and put them on first reading next time, we can do that as well. But they were posted for, you know, for a full week or so prior to tonight's meeting. And I do want to review just and mention the no distracted driving policy would be a new policy, but one that after talking with our team, we felt like is certainly a relevant policy to add today, focusing on safety and essentially letting both internal stakeholders, employees and students, as well as external stakeholders, know that on property, on school property, we're not driving with phones or food or mirrors or other items of that sort. And then the second new policy is one that we've mentioned, at least at the last board meeting, if not prior to that. We've been working on this one for a little while. And this is a cash balance policy. I added a slide here just to clarify. So we didn't have a cash balance policy before. Why would we have one? After thinking about it, it seems like a good public policy. Essentially, it gives, you know, the public parameters for, you know, what we're going to follow when it comes to budgeting and cash management. Helps the business office as they're budgeting to know what is the expectation of the board when it comes to maintaining a cash balance that allows us to maintain stability and sufficient liquidity to pay our bills. So making sure we have enough days, weeks and months of cash on hand to pay our bills and stay liquid. Also, protect against unexpected losses in revenues or unexpected emergency expenditures. It'll also, credit agencies and bond investors would look at a policy like that and see that we have strong controls in place to make sure that all of those prior bullet points are maintained. And then plus, it helps us maintain a stable tax rate that the public knows what to expect and keeps us from collecting more cash than what we need to have on hand based on our own policy. So the proposal in the F350 cash balance policy is that we would, in the operating funds, which are defined in the policy as the education fund, the operations fund and the operating referendum fund, that those three policies would, or those three funds, we would have a balance at a minimum of 13.5% of that year's budgeted expenditures and a maximum of 19%. That is two months to 2.3 months of cash on hand. And then in the rainy day fund, which is separate and we don't budget it, we don't touch it without board action, that would be between 4% and 6% of that year's budgeted expenditures in the operating funds. For a total of between 17 and 1/2% and 25%. And I just want to remind, I'll remind everyone on the board that we have, during the first reading, we give an opportunity, of course, for discussions and questions. But then if the majority of the board wishes to hold a public work session on any of them, there's a motion and a vote. And then we will schedule that before the next board meeting to address any changes that you'd like to make. Happy to answer any questions on any of the policies.
I have a quick question. Are you able to hear me still?
Yes.
Regarding the balances, so I know the state has a target balance between 8% and 12%, but ours is higher. Can you talk a little bit about why BCSC would set a higher target than the state?
Good question. You're right, each year that I've seen the budget come out from the state, it's, they have a color chart that shows a band between 8% and 12%. Mr. Brenner is walking up here and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but the state, the state brings in revenue on an ongoing basis. Every day, every week, from sales taxes, property taxes. All of that revenue is flowing all of the time. For us, we receive distribution once a month in the education fund. And then in the other two funds, once every six months. And so for us to be able to make sure as we ride the wave of the declining balance in that each of those six-month periods, that when we have, for example, a three-pay month, because we're on 26 pays in BCSC, the three-pay month and it happens to be before we're collecting property taxes, that cash can get pretty low.
Okay.
Sorry, I took your thunder away, Mr. Brenner. Appreciate you coming up there.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Just something that stuck out and I was curious what the reasoning was.
Also, I have a question. It's good that we discuss a policy like this for the reasons that you mentioned, but we're not the only ones that have control over our cash balances. How does this policy interact with what Department of Local Government Finance says to us when they review an annual budget for us?
The only funds that the Department of Local Government Finance and Indiana Code limit are the debt service funds that pay the bonds. They actually put a hard cap on how much cash you can hold in those funds. And it's limited to that year's payments and then a percentage of the next year's payments. And that's it. Other than that, they have not, you know, responded to a cash balance.
And then that action that they take every year where they approve our final tax rate? And that would impact some of these balances as well?
It can if we budget either expenditures above where we expect to collect revenue or below. In either of those cases, it could in fact, impact the tax rate.
Thank you.
In fact, if we used cash instead of property tax collections, that would lower the tax rate to fund a year's budget, for example.
I have maybe a clarifying question for Dr. Bozeman on H100 school visitors and parent-family engagement. I think there's been some misunderstandings in the past. I want to clarify in our policy and in our practice, if a parent would like to go to see their student at lunchtime in every one of our schools, is that permitted in our policy?
It is, so long as all other board policies are observed. So background checks, et cetera. So, but yes.
And that's new for this year? Or was it in effect last year? For all schools?
I'm not, I believe that was in effect for last year. Dr. Hack can clarify. But I believe that was in effect last year as well. So, but nothing, nothing in policy that you're reviewing today that's changing with any current practice?
I don't think it was policy that drove that. I think the parents were asked to not attend lunch in the student handbooks in elementary schools that we approved each of the last two years.
Okay, thanks.
So this year, if I recall right, was the first year that the student handbooks allowed parents to go back.
Explicitly.
It wasn't policy that did that. It was.
The handbooks were in conflict with standing policy.
Thanks for the clarification on that.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming up with the cash balance policy. This is something that I think I've been very vocal about in the past of having such large reserves. One thing I would ask here is, would it be possible to put, I guess, dollar amounts next to the 13 and 1/2, 19? That way, we can see what it should be based on the budget and then also look at what our actuals are to know if, I'm going to make a number up, just say 13% is 25 million and we're at 30. Right? Or if it's 25 million and we're at 20, that kind of gives us some ideas to where we need to move, up or down, to hit whatever our targeted numbers are.
And that's what we'll start doing in the quarterly financial update as well as, and we can do it for the purposes of right today at this moment as well, but we'll do it in the quarterly financial update as well as obviously during the budget process, which will start here in a month, month and a half.
Any other questions? I do, I am, anyone have a concern with considering this a first reading given some of the yellow changes? I'm comfortable with that.
I couldn't hear you, what'd you say?
Is anyone concerned about considering this a first reading given some of the legislative changes?
Not for first reading, no.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Just to clarify before, yes, I think I agree. But the yellow highlight changes that were made a little bit more recently were to comply with laws that have been passed by the state of Indiana?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Bozeman.
Good evening. Thank you for affording us a bit of time. You may remember each year about this time, we will give you a, we call it a CPF project update, which we will do here tonight. And then we're also going to include an energy management update as well over the past eight years or so. I have Drew Minette with me and Martin Roberts. Drew and Martin help manage most of our CPF projects. So generally speaking, projects that are less than $100,000 that they'll speak to. And they also work with our trades personnel. So HVAC, electricians, plumbers, grounds, carpenters, life safety, et cetera. I will give you a brief update on some of our summertime envision work. This is Northside Middle School. And generally speaking, everything in the north end of Northside is under heavy renovation. If you drive by, you may notice a gigantic wall in what used to be the pool. That will no longer be a pool, obviously. And this is, this will turn into a large group instruction space. But it's very noticeable off of US 31. If you've been around and that's looking back to the north from that same vantage point there. So heavy construction and demo going through there. This is again on the north end of the old building, the 63 Harry Wies Building. This is on the main level. If you, if you're a former Northsider or familiar with the space, these were all classrooms, eight of them, all the way down that run. And now it's one large space as they go through demo. Will be put back in place. Hallway on the third floor. And then looking out, this is actually looking out into the interior courtyard also on that, on that third floor. This will be a neat project when it's done as the natural light will really flow in from those spaces in through the common spaces and hallway and then out into the other classrooms, which was one of Wies's intended purposes of the design of that space. Smith Elementary, also starting with renovation this summer. We are in phase one and two of the space at Schmidt, in 2A actually. So we'll call that the pink color in the top left and then the yellow color towards the bottom that's under renovation now and they're starting on the corridor addition and that brown towards the middle. These are the kindergarten, excuse me, pre-k classrooms that are being renovated that are adjacent to the current main office. And this is in that heavy construction area that I had shown earlier that will be a second grade area as they're starting to do some framing in that space as well. If you're a former Smith Sonic, you may recall an exterior staircase here that's been demolished and taken away. That was an item that needed significant repair. And so we decided to replace that. So the new staircase is going in now. That provides secondary egress for students on the upper stair, which was currently sixth grade. Schmidt Elementary, also making really good progress here. We are in, happy to explain this if you need to, but we are in, we are in phase two, four, five and six at Schmidt Elementary. So the, I don't know, we'll call it the orange color because I'm not great with my primary colors. In the middle there is all under punch list right now. Will be ready for students. The brown area is the media center. That is also getting close to being finished up. And the addition also, board members may recall, we toured part of that addition just a handful of weeks ago. This is a snapshot into the wellness area. This is just adjacent to the main office at Schmidt Elementary. This is as of about a week ago in the media center. So the, these, the windows there on the left, those are called nano walls and they actually open up. So this would be a great large group space, which will also. So this would be a great large group space, which will also serve as the media center. Schmidt Elementary, again, back to the original design and attention of Harry Wies. Another view of the space in there. This is the addition that I mentioned before that looks out into, you see all the clear story lighting that comes in for natural light. And then this is the not very clean courtyard that is with roofing that's happening at the same time. So the classroom I was just in, you walk out those doors into that enclosed courtyard that's fenced. And you walk out the other way into the common space towards the other playground. This is in the wing that I showed you a moment ago. This is a large, the common space on the right-hand side for second grade also and a classroom on the left. Also of note, this is the car line at Schmidt Elementary and that has been widened. So double the traffic can come through there to hopefully relieve congestion on the neighboring streets. East High School, C4 and the biomed and dental lab, they are well underway and on schedule here at East High School. So this is for reference, second floor upstairs, obviously overlooking towards the west, towards the tennis courts. And this is another view just looking back in the opposite direction. Excuse me, this is central middle school. This is central middle school library and the library wellness and makerspace project that's happening at Central Middle School also. I'll turn this over to Drew. I'll mention a couple of things as he starts and goes through. We're very photo-heavy in this presentation tonight. So Drew spends a lot of his time on small capital projects throughout the year. Summertime is very busy for Drew. We spend about $2 million or so. We budget about $2 million or so each year for CPF. We can help answer questions about that, but I will hand the microphone to Drew, let him speak more specifically.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. With our CPF projects, like Dr. Bozeman said, we gather information with the building reps, principals, we get lists, wish lists, wants, needs. And we bring those back to the table with our team and Dr. Bozeman. And we've kind of prioritized that list, whether what's important now, what's going to be covered in the projects in the future. So that way we don't, you know, put new carpet here and it get tore out in the 2030 vision. So I think we do a fantastic job of communicating that stuff and not doubling back and tearing out or starting over on something that we just did, you know, maybe in the past couple of years. But this is my third year now and our CPF kind of begins with, we meet with the principals, they give us the list, we prioritize. Then we sit down, they put a number to that. And then my summer begins with anywhere, any building could have anywhere from three to five projects for the summer. And if you kind of do that, that's anywhere from 50 to 70 projects that I may have to complete in a short period of time. We do, is this up here on the side? Okay, yeah, sorry. So a lot of my stuff, well, we do a lot of paint, a lot of concrete, lighting, parking lots, classrooms, hallways, flooring. We, you know, we do carpet, tile, epoxy. Epoxy is becoming more popular. It's easier to care for than VCT and stuff in certain areas, mostly nurses' office, restrooms. Really easy to put down and it holds up really well. With our miscellaneous, we do like blinds, windows, could be stage curtains, diving boards at North this summer. We do some kilns for our class and we do a lot of landscaping around the properties that may not be covered in the project itself in the 2030 vision stuff. So with that said, couple here on the left and the middle is Southside Elementary. We had some crumbling concrete. We were able to go in, replace. That just so happened that that is above the tunnel at Southside where some water was getting in a little bit. So we were able to remedy that through CPF project. So it was kind of two birds with one stone there. Southside Kitchen, we were able to paint. Power washing, that was a good one for Southside. That building looks phenomenal. In spots, it had a lot of rust, spots from rebar that was exposed, it was running down that we were able to get off. There's some spotted dalmatian areas, but I think that'll go away with the weather and time. But it was very black and dark and dingy in a lot of areas on the north and west facing sides. And we were able to clean that building up really nice. Did some interior painting there as well. East High School, the front steps, I don't know if you ever saw those. They were crumbling and falling apart. We did try this new thing that we did at Southside with, it's like a sandy grit material. The middle picture is kind of the, one of the almost finished products. So you do see a lot of debris and stuff there. But if you get a chance, drive by those steps all the way around the corner are fantastic. They look great. And we're going to hope that they hold up as well as the past ones. Interior painting as well at East. East Auxiliary Gym, it was pretty bad. You see the guy there on the lower, on the left. He's painting the lower and we had a guy in the lift doing the upper on that wall. That entire gym got painted. There in the middle is the North High School office area. You think kids are kind of rough on hallways and dinging them and leaving marks, but the North office, principal's office there and cohorts offices, they were banged up pretty good. So we were able to patch those. To the right is Richards. We believe that was a foundation issue there on the top right there. We were able to get in, found some water damage and some leak up top. And it was actually coming down that expansion joint. We were able to repair that. So we didn't have to dig out. And, you know, we were afraid, foundation, everybody kind of panics. And we were able to repair that one fairly easy. It was on our CPF. The window edges had some moisture and some rotting around those. We were able to repair those as well. So to the left is Richards planer boxes. That was kind of a tough one. We did the front ones last year and these are the ones on the north side, kind of towards the par three in the tennis court there. That's a little rough looking, but it's not ours. This, we were able to match the brick really well with Richards. They turned out phenomenal. I was really happy with those. And that was a good project and I appreciate the contractors on those. CSA New Tech, a lot of concrete issues. We were able to break that up, pour some new steps back there, kind of by the loading dock. And then we address some ADA ramps there on the other side of the building there. So central, left and middle, there was, you can kind of see a little bit of new concrete next to the building there. It had pea gravel in it and those doors, the clearance when they drug, didn't have a whole lot and gravel would get in there and those kind of prevent those doors from shutting. So it was kind of a security thing. So we were able to take some of that pea gravel out and replace back with some exposed concrete there that I think will have, that's not the finished look, but it'll have a really nice shine to it eventually. And epoxy floors there in the park side, nurses' station. You know, we doubled back there with a few areas that we may have missed in project and we were able to take care of those. So again, our CPF stuff, like I said, Martin and Greg and Tony and all these guys, it's great to be on this team and they do a phenomenal job. And like I said, we just move forward and we appreciate this 2030 vision stuff. And our CPF is moving along nicely this summer. So we're about to wrap up a lot here in the next week or two. So I'll introduce Martin Roberts here.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. My name's Martin Roberts. This is about the first time I've done this, so be patient with me a little bit. We had decided, when we talked about doing an energy report, to focus on eight years, starting with 2016 to 2024, 2024, because that's the last year that we have a full year of data. So looking at the first slide, again, it's an eight-year span. You'll find the blue line. That's the total cost of all our facilities each year for eight years. That's electrical. The orange line is the total cost of our natural gas for eight years. And again, in 2016, on the left side, you'll find a chart that will show us a year's use of electricity there. We paid about nine cents a kilowatt hour and it was a total of 2, 2,200,000, well, 2.2, little over that million. And on the right side, you'll find another chart that shows us energy use, and this is electrical as well. We paid 10 cents a kilowatt hour. And we'll find that it was a little less in 2024 with just over $2 million. Again, if we look, this is natural gas. On the left side is 2016. We paid 5.53 dollars per decatherm. And it was a cost of 412,454 dollars. On the right, you'll find in 2024, we paid $5.68 cents for a decatherm. And the total was 4,022 and 4,200, 42228. How about that? This is the fascinating slide for me. I just, I can get into this one. If you'll find on the left side in 2016, again, this is total cost. If you look at the red line, the red vertical line and the blue line just on top, it is total cost for that month. It represents a month for eight years. So the total, gas and electric in 2016 was 2.6, little over 2.6 million. If you start moving right, you'll find that there's a green arrow there. And at this time, we did three projects. We did an LED lighting project and two solar projects. So you'll find at that time that the energy cost went way down. Red line, it indicates when COVID hit us. At that time, we was, we shut down the buildings, closed the outside air and run them in an unoccupied state most of the time. And so the cost there went really, it went down quite a bit. After that, when the schools opened back up, we found, we was instructed that, well, I was instructed that I should run the schools almost 24/7 for ventilation to get fresh air into the school. So we find that the usage really went up there. And we also will find in that that there was a rate spike. The rates went up quite a bit. I seen one report where it got up to about 13 cents per kilowatt hour for electricity. After that, it settled back down and we got to 2024. We ended up paying about 10 cents a kilowatt hour for electricity. And the total was about 2.5 million. This is Taylorsville. This is a picture of Taylorsville, electrical use between 2016 to 2024. We talked about one of the solar projects. One of them was put in at Taylorsville. And you can see, putting in the LED lighting and the solar, you can see the significant drop that it made around 2020. Again, it spiked back up, but that was because of the electric prices going back up a little bit. Come back down and we ended up paying about 10 cents a kilowatt hour. This is also, this is a picture of Northside from 2016 to 2024. Around 2020, we also installed LED lighting and solar in it. And again, the significant drop you can see. And again, the rise when the price of kilowatt hour went up. But both those projects, you can see that they made a large difference, especially in those schools. So anyway, that's not the only projects we've done in our schools, you know. But when we install new equipment, usually it's wore out. Usually it's time for it to be replaced. We've been able to replace it with more efficient equipment. Our boilers, the old ones there, they were gas users. And we replaced them with new boilers called condensing boilers, where they will actually change the temperature of the water. By that being said, we use a lot less gas when we run them. So in our shoulder months, when the temperatures are just right, you know, really between when we need real cooling and real heating, we can drop the temperature of the heating water down, use a lot less gas to heat it and still condition our buildings. We've put in a few chillers in this amount of time too, and we've been able to buy more efficient chillers as well. And that contributed also to at least us staying the same or even dropping a little bit in our usage in these eight hours. Eight hours, eight years of time. Any questions?
I don't believe this is your first time. You did a great job taking us through that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
What questions do we have?
The only thing I would like to see is potential to see what we spend on water and sewer as well. That way we get a full scope picture of the whole thing.
The, I'll mention, remind you that the, we're in a in a group with other large districts for natural gas purchasing that saved us quite a bit. It's a mega. You approve the contract every couple of years that it comes through. So that's helped as well. And this slide is just a synopsis of all the items that we've covered here. And I appreciate Martin's, Martin spends a lot of time fixing things, but he spends a lot of time planning things as well and looking out and forecasting and such. So the fact that we're spending fewer dollars on more expensive things now than we were eight years ago is significant. So thanks to both. And yes, happy to answer any other questions you have, any of the three of us are.
I think on the chart, you pointed out solar investments in 2020, but I didn't see any since then. Can you just talk about our decisions with regards to adding solar and why that hasn't showed back up?
Sure. Yeah, good question. So you may recall at the time, we had decided that as our roofing systems need replaced on our schools, we would consider putting solar on top of them as the roof replaces. So we're obviously not going to put a solar system on a roof that's 15 years old because the lifespan of both those systems are about 20, 25 years. So we still do that. So we review. To answer this question a little more specifically, the cost of solar has come up quite a bit. I think we paid $1.37 a kilowatt on the two projects that we have done here, which we struck with iron was hot for lack of a better term there and really have reaped the rewards. And those costs have gone up quite a bit, quite a bit since then. So the new elementary, most specifically, we had the solar conversation quite a bit back and forth and realized that geothermal would be a better investment in the current time. So that's what you'll see featured at Maple Grove.
Great, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
The first two sections of the presentation, the glamorous projects, the 2030 projects funded with debt. And then the second section was capital projects. The debt funding comes and goes. The capital project funds, we receive for budget to spend every year. What's the size difference? How much are our capital project funds every year?
They vary, but roughly around $2 million every year on the CPF side of things. So.
How many buildings do we take care of with $2 million?
23 physical buildings, about 2 million square feet under roof.
How much is that a square foot?
It's about a dollar, about a dollar a square foot. So we will oftentimes, anytime anybody asks me. So we, we will oftentimes, anytime anybody asks me, um.
So if I've got a twelve hundred square foot home, that's the equivalent of me putting twelve hundred dollars into a project every year?
That's the same reasoning I use, yes. Yeah, so, uh, so yes, to answer your question a little bit differently, two million dollars seems like a lot. Um, but we have a tremendous amount of space that we, that we have dedicated for, for our schools, uh, for teaching and learning, so.
And I, I guess it's, it's obvious, but at schools like Northside or Smith or Schmidt, where we've got envision twenty thirty projects going on, we're not going to be spending capital project funds there.
That's right. Yeah, so Drew, Drew, he mentioned that a little bit, but Drew will still meet with those building administrators um, for, for the purpose of an exercise really. Um, and sometimes there are some small things that are not within the scope of the project. He, he had shown a photo of the, I think the nurses station at Parkside, the flooring, and we just missed it. I mean, we're going to miss some of these small things within the projects. Um, so he can go in and, and that one, I think we paid out of the project fund, it was not a CPF, but he can go in there after the fact and, and do them, you know, pretty quick and easy, so. Um, but yeah, he'll meet with each of the buildings and, um, but those buildings, Northside is an example, um, very little, if any at all, CPF money budgeted for the next year when there's a project going on, so.
Doctor Bozeman?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have time for one more question?
Of course.
Just curious, um, what do you anticipate the impact of the new property tax reform to be on BCSU's ability to maintain our facilities and specifically the CPF budget?
Yeah, it's, it's a really good question. Um, so none of that, none of that looks like it's going to be good news on any of our budgets. Um, and with CPF being funded strictly by the operating funds, um, the only prediction we have is it's going to be tighter moving ahead. So we'll, we'll have to make more careful decisions. Um, Drew mentioned that there's eight priority items, sometimes on a school's list and we fund five, we may fund three moving ahead, depending on how that, how that all shakes down. So definitely, I appreciate the question and bringing that to light. Definitely will be an impact on our CPF budgets is, is my prediction.
Thank you. And Drew and Martin, thank you for, for being there tonight and for sharing this information with us.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now into the public comment section of our meeting, so I'll review um, our, our practice there. Um, can you go back a slide? Actually need that, there you go, okay. Uh, if you went to public, uh, or speak at any board meeting, when you walk in the room here at the admin building, um, there's a blue sheet on the table and you can sign in to do so during this section, we, we have this at every meeting. Um, when you, when you speak, I'll call you up by name off of the sheet and you'll have three minutes. There is a timer to help keep you on track and I do ask people to stick to the three minutes um, per our policy. If, if someone has spoken prior to you and they've made a similar point, it's okay for you to say that person, I agree and, and not speak, but you can always come up and speak again if you have, have something separate to say. Please refrain from using the names of individual students, staff members or specific titles. It's the same thing. We want to make sure um, that we're being respectful um, of everyone and um, no cheers and dears from the audience. Sometimes it takes a lot of courage to come up and speak in front of a group, knowing you're on YouTube forever and ever. Uh, so we want to make sure that all feel comfortable doing that. So with that, I will call the first name on the list, which is Shelley McAllister. You're going to pass, okay, no problem. Um, and the other name I have on the list is Nick Cruiser. Okay, okay, thank you. All right. We will move on to our next topic. I have no one else listed.
All right, thank you. Next item is request for approval. Um, under old business, um, we have the minutes of the executive session from June sixteenth of twenty twenty-five and the regular school board meeting, also June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I request approval for the minutes, uh, for item six A, minutes from the June sixteenth meeting. And I'm, I'll just, thank you, Mr. McGyver, your, your signal there. Um, because Whitney is online, I do believe the expectation, the rules are that Whitney has to turn on her camera while we vote and we do a roll call vote for tonight's votes.
And she cannot vote on any budgetary approvals? I believe that's right remotely.
Correct, which are, there aren't those tonight.
Yep.
So again, I'll repeat, I request approval of item six A, minutes of the June sixteenth executive session and regular school board meeting.
I move to approve line item six A as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Glick. Any comments or question by the board? Okay, all those in favor of approving item?
Roll call.
Oh, yes. We will do roll call. I will start with Mr. Schultz, approval of item six A as presented.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Glick?
Aye.
Ms. Wielden is aye. Mr. Stener?
Aye.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Under new business, we have uh, items seven A through seven F, and those include the regular approvals of supplemental contracts, field trips and professional leaves, school fundraisers, and then the claims from the July twenty-one, tonight's docket of one point seven eight eight million, uh, the June twenty twenty-five pre-runs of twenty point one million. And I just remind you, that number is uh, the large amount because we make our semi-annual debt payments in June and December. And also the payrolls from May sixteenth to May thirtieth of just under six point six million. And the permission to award item seven E, permission to award construction manager as constructor at Taylorsville Elementary. And then item seven F is approval of that Ed Flex waiver that we held the public hearing on at the beginning of the meeting. Request approval of items seven A through seven F.
I move that we approve line items seven A through seven F as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz and Mr. Major. We'll start at the end again to be consistent. Mr. Schultz, how do you vote? Yay or nay?
Aye.
Mr. Glick?
Aye.
Ms. Wielden votes aye. Mr. Stener?
Aye.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes six zero.
Ms. Wielden, uh, as I spoke to you before the meeting, um, I did talk to Mike and Mike said that uh, policy zero one six six, uh, prior to the meeting, if an individual member uh, can add an agenda item with concurrence from the president, or during the meeting, uh, items may be added by unanimous vote of the all present. And so since I, I asked about a topic before the meeting, uh, would you be kind enough to offer your concurrence to add that uh, agenda item to the meeting?
Given we have one member um, remote and one member not here, I do not want to change the meeting agenda tonight.
So then can we vote for it?
You can go to vote and I think it requires unanimous, or is it four three, Mr. McGyver?
To amend the agenda in the course of the meeting would require the unanimous agreement of all the board members.
Okay.
All the board members who are present for the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, all right, so what I would like to have, uh, a motion added a item to request that during the, let me preface this too before I get really started. Um, over the last month and a half, I've had many conversations with people, uh, from standing out at the fair, talking to people, to just this weekend, uh, at the grocery store, talking to, I don't know, a handful of people. I bumped into Mr. Grimes this weekend as well and he seems to be doing pretty good and wanted to tell you all hi as well. Um, but the concern that I have heard from people overwhelmingly is uh, the, the fact that their taxes, for whatever reason, continue to increase. Our spending also increases significantly from twenty twenty-one to, to, to this year. Our uh, budget is up from around a hundred and twenty-five million to a hundred and sixty-eight million, so it's up about thirty-three, thirty-four percent. And they're concerned just with the fact that, uh, you know, our budget is rising faster than both the city or the county budgets and it's pretty significant. So the, the motion I would like to make, the agenda I, add, item I would like to add would be to request that during upcoming budget cycle, that the admin, uh, and the budget team address every one dollar increase of the budget from this year forward with an identified and actionable fifty cents uh, reduction. So that's, that's what I'm requesting to have added. So for every dollar we go up from a hundred and sixty-eight million, we try and find fifty cents in savings.
And you're making a motion to add this to this agenda?
To this agenda, so that we can then vote on that, to ask them well in advance to have that information available to us when they uh, present the budget. I would not want to ask for this the same night that we go through the budget, it's too late. So I'm asking in advance if they can, as they're looking at increasing, I, I, I mean, you got to think about it, we, we couldn't have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for extension of free lunch to all students, right? It's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We now have to figure out how to fund athletic trainers for both of the high schools. We've talked about pre-K in the past, all those things, the, the, the athletic trainers are going to make the costs go up, the pre-K is going to make the costs go up. We haven't even started to talk about teacher increases for teacher pay. So I would like for this to be uh, discussed, advised, requested well in advance, so that they can prepare something for us in the future, assuming the rest of you want to vote for that.
Am I allowed to seek a point of clarity on the motion?
Yes, of course, I'm confused.
When you're saying identifying fifty cents, you're not obligating any reductions, you're saying simply bring savings ideas to the table as part of it?
Identify something that would be actionable. So if we chose to move forward with that reduction, it's there, but to just come forward with a list that's non-actionable doesn't, it's not, it's not a real list. So, so we're at a hundred and sixty-eight million right now, based on the eight percent a year that we've gone up each of the last four or five years. That puts us about a hundred and eighty-one million for the next uh, budget cycle, if you use the same eight percent projection. And so just say it's a hundred and seventy-five, hundred, a hundred and eighty million. Uh, if you go up twelve million, how can we find six million in savings?
Okay. The original motion was to present a budget that saves fifty cents on every dollar. And it, and add that to the next meeting agenda? I'm looking for specificity, if that's what we're targeting.
I would like for them to present that when they present the budget.
And when is that?
They usually present the budget, what, in September?
I'm just asking for clarification, so we know what we're voting on.
If I recall, we have, is this discussion or?
We need a second.
Mrs. Wielden, so I think the request for this evening, Mr. Major would like to add an item to tonight's agenda, which accomplishes what he has described. So the initial question in front of the board is, do you want to add consideration of that item as a board to tonight's agenda? To add that item as something that you as a board would consider for tonight would require the unanimous agreement of all of the board members. If the board is not unanimous about considering it tonight, then as a board, you cannot take action on it. Mr. Major can certainly share, as he has done thus far, or in the board input comment, I think his individual goals or hopes for that conversation at budget time, but the board as a whole would not be taking action on it because it would not be an agenda item. So initial question is, is there unanimous agreement to add this item for further consideration this evening?
Thank you, Mr. McGyver. There was a motion, I think I still need a second of that motion. Is that fair to change the agenda or no?
I think that would be appropriate, then, then the threshold is that, the, the decision still has to be unanimous at the end of the day is really the threshold.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Glick. So the motion is to discuss a fifty cents on every dollar reduction and add that conversation to the agenda tonight. Mr. Schultz? Yes, of course.
I think I want to vote no, but I do think also that Mr. Major's idea is worthy of consideration. In my experience on the board, every time we've looked at the budget, we've looked at making it as efficient as possible. And I think uh, Mr. Major's motion um, kind of follows in that same spirit. And so I, uh, Dr. Bozeman, Dr. Phillips have heard um, certainly what Mr. Major hopes we can accomplish. And I hope that's taken into consideration, but as to the agenda item being added tonight, I think I'll vote no. We'll see how the vote goes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
Real quick, one more point of clarification. This is a budget request, correct? This is a, involving a budget, correct?
This is just initially something to put, a vote to put something on the agenda, so it shouldn't have anything budgetary restriction.
I would have to look at the statute. I would let, I, I assume, are you asking because Ms. Lloyd is, Ms. Lloyd is?
Correct.
Is remote. I, I am inclined to agree with Mr. Glick's interpretation that the initial question is as to amending the agenda, but then if the agenda were amended, at that point, I would need to look at the statute to confirm whether she would be able to vote on that particular question.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just asking for confirmation because I know Rich just said he's probably going to vote no, so.
Okay. Are we clear what we're voting on? There was a motion to add an agenda item to save fifty cents on every dollar spent into tonight's discussion by Mr. Major and it was seconded by Mr. Glick. Mr. Schultz?
Do I get to explain it or do we just vote?
You vote whether we want that on the agenda tonight, yay or nay?
I'm going to explain, I'm, I had a question, but do we jump straight into voting here? Similar to Mr. Stener. My understanding is, I just want to be very clear, this is not obligating, this is seeking to identify roughly six million of opportunity. I mean, I've done this on churches, I've done this on nonprofits, three and a half percent seems reasonable, so because it's identifying and it's just discussing this, I vote aye.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Glick?
Aye.
I vote nay. I think we always look for ways to be efficient and I would expect that in the next budget review, as we always see it in our budget reviews. Mr. Stener?
I'm going to vote nay, but I would ask that as we conclude the vote, maybe we review the timeline for the twenty twenty-six budget. If I recall, there are several workshops before any actions taken. I'd just like to be sure I understand when the workshops are going to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Major?
I'll vote yes, of course.
Yep. Ms. Lloyd?
I've not been through the budget review process, this will be my first year. Uh, obviously, we'll take it quite seriously and would like to have some more conversation around what it has been like previously and what sort of cost savings could be had. I also agree that reviewing and seeing where we can trim is always really important. Um, but as far as the agenda tonight, uh, I, I'm going to say no.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Dr. Staubbaum?
Thank you. You have received a human resources recommendation in board docs. You've also received human resources recommendations on a piece of paper this evening and then an additional human resources recommendation in board docs as well because it is July. So the seventeen human resources recommendations consist of nine resignations, five appointments, one leave of absence and one withdrawal. There is also one additional personnel recommendation this evening. I request that you please approve items eight A and B as presented.
I move to approve line items eight A and B as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz and Mr. Major. Any questions or comments from the team before we go to vote? Okay. We are voting on items eight and B as presented. Mr. Schultz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Glick?
Aye.
Ms. Wielden votes aye. Mr. Stener?
Aye.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd? Uh, your mic is on mute.
Thank you. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It is time for, uh, Okay, it is time for board input and review. Ms. Lloyd, would you mind if I asked you to go first, since you're on video?
No, of course not. Thanks to the presenters tonight, Dr. Staubbaum, I really enjoyed learning about what's happening with our teachers and how we can do our best work to retain the wonderful educators that we do have. I will say, I was one of the board members that attended the Future Educators Day and I thought it was a fabulous opportunity to celebrate future educators and the students seemed to really enjoy it, so I hope that that will continue next year. Also, wanted to congratulate Dr. Hack on her recognition from the Chamber of Commerce and just wish our students a great last few weeks of summer. I can't believe that we are soon headed back to school, so I hope it's a fun, safe few weeks and that everyone is getting their school supplies ready.
Mr. Major?
So unfortunately Dale's not here tonight, but Dale and I both attended the School Boards for Academic Excellence over in Cincinnati event. It was a three-day event, great event, I learned quite a bit. I will share, I was hoping to talk to him, but he's, he's already left. We actually sat down and reviewed some notes and shared some thoughts, and so I'll send that out to the board, so the board has an idea as to what we saw and what we learned. I also wanted to offer, there's not a whole lot going on during the summer, but one thing I found pretty interesting on Facebook popped up, that former East baseball player Cole Gillie was drafted by the Philadelphia Phillies, so that's a pretty cool thing to see. And then the other thing I wanted to just ask and make a request to is if we could have a updated safety meeting in the coming month or two, just to kind of understand a little bit more about how we're going to continue to protect our teachers and our students in schools. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Stener?
Mr. Major mentioned our colleague Dale on the trail. Just to remind everybody, the School Foundation's a great place to make donations in recognition of Dale on the Appalachian Trail. Just because of some of the things that happened over the summer, I want to commend all the folks in the high schools that are part of the staff that advise and counsel the cohorts that we have as they track through the school, through the four-year school experience at high school. I continue to be amazed at some of the results we're getting from the investments that we made when we set that program up. Really happy and pleased and I'm sure everybody on the board wants to thank the folks that are involved in that work for what they do. Mr. Burnett, last meeting tonight? Congratulations. We will miss you, as evidenced by the video that you helped put together for Mr. Chastain. I enjoyed hearing Mr. Chastain, and I know that wouldn't be possible if you hadn't done the work you did. So thank you for all your work that has helped the board do a better job representing the public here.
Now, we've, we've mentioned Dale a couple of times, just want to actually recognize him. He is on the trail, Dale on the trail, raising money for the School Foundation. His dedication to completing the Appalachian Trail is pretty admirable, so just hats off to him. And Dr. Hack is in the room and, and Ms. Lloyd couldn't see that, so I'm going to call for a round of applause for Dr. Hack's recognition. Community-wide, your leadership is inspiring. Thank you, Dr. Hack, you represent us well. Mr. Glick?
I'd just like to say thanks for the update on the changes for federal funding. That came July 1st and hopefully that gets resolved as we move forward. And then also thank you for the turf safety update from Friday. It's going to be a good read-through. Other than that, nothing else. More in summer, I guess.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
I was just going to say, everyone enjoying the last weeks of summer. I know I will be on vacation with my kids and welcome back. I know the teachers are going to start filling the rooms and getting ready for the new year. Appreciate Dr. Staubbaum, the presentation on retention and pathways, that's, that's very exciting. I know we've talked about it during CCIC. And then just to watch out for those, for the public in terms of safety, I think it's August 6th is the first day? So children will be wandering streets, children will be finding bus stops, please go slow and be courteous, as, you know, parents and children identify new locations as they sometimes may change, so just be on the watch out. Thank you.
Ms. Wielden, if I could just provide a follow-up, thank you, Mr. Glick. You mentioned the, the federal funding conversation. I sent the board an update a couple of weeks ago. Since that time, we've also learned, so the three federal grants, Title 2, 3, and 4, were about $800,000 a year for BCSU and really serve our, you know, neediest students, reflect our deep commitment to fundamental reading skills and strong curriculum and instruction. And then Title 3, there are 11 teaching assistants that work with English language learners that are, that are paid by that grant. So we are committed to finding a way to make sure that the staff who work most closely with students, you know, we can keep that in place regardless of what happens, but again echoing your, your sentiment that hopefully those funds are released relatively soon. But what we've learned since then is also there are adult ed programs that aren't part of Title 2, 3, or 4 that were also withheld and are being, not being distributed to states. And so thanks to Mr. Newell and his staff over there, looking for every way that they can to continue to serve as many as the adult learners in our community as possible. So we'll keep focused and we're going to get this, this school year started, you know, with as close to a full staff as, as we can with those grants. And we have until, we have funds until at least September 30th, and then, you know, we'll keep working towards making sure those services stay in place.
Next meeting, if you can go to the next slide.
Thank you. Next meeting is after the first day of school, so Teacher Work Day is Monday, August 4th. They will also be wandering the streets like the students, Mr. Schultz. No, they, they will be, are excited to come in already. You could really feel a difference in energy in this building today compared to the past couple of Mondays, so folks are coming back and starting to, to get ready for the year. Professional Development Day is on Tuesday, the 5th, First Student Day on the 6th, and we're excited to see you all then. And then the next Monday is the board meeting on August 11th.
Thank you. In this building at 6:30 PM. Nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone.